I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for today, August 9th, 2017. And the first order of business is the approval of our minutes from June 14th and June 28th. So, any additions or corrections needed?
No.
All right, motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. All right, the next order of business are three items. One, street naming, and then there's a discussion on tattoo parlors in B3 districts, and discussion on changing the zoning ordinance pertaining to sidewalks. So, on the first issue of the street naming, I think Rachel will be talking to us.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. This portion of street that's proposed for renaming came up as part of a subdivision plat, actually. And it was pointed out by the owner, and as well as 911, that essentially we've got Peninsular Street on three sections of street, and it actually intersects itself. So, that portion... Can I get that? Yeah. So, this portion here is an open and active street, and the street sign does say Peninsular Street, both ways. This is actually a... Where's my mouse? This is actually a paper street here, so it does not have a name. So, this whole thing is proposed to be Moses Lane, Moses being for the property owner at this address who's lived there, or his family has lived there for a very long time. And this is the, actually, the only house that would have to change their address, so they are in agreement with that. And this house, excuse me, this property does not yet have a house, so it shouldn't be an issue. So, this item doesn't require a vote, just any comment from Planning Commission before sending it on to City Council?
Certainly makes sense not to have confusion on the street name.
Three-way intersection.
No problem.
Sounds good to me.
All right, great.
We'll move that on. Next item is discussing the allowing of tattoo parlors in B3 districts. And we do have somebody who wanted to speak with us, Mr. Hicks. Like to come forward and do we sign the name, this, or is this? Okay, all right.
I don't know where to begin. They've done a good job here. This recaps the situation pretty well. There's a couple of details missing. My name's CJ Hicks. I'm a local real estate investor in the city since 2003. I operate and manage about 40,000 square feet of commercial space in the city, mostly in the midtown area. Prior to the last rewrite, I guess it was around 2014, tattoo parlors were not mentioned in the code at all. So, basically, there was no restriction. If someone came up here and they wanted to open one in any district, there wasn't anything in the code to prevent them from doing that. When you guys added the institutional code a few years ago, or institutional zones, there were some other tweaks made in the code, I understand, and this is one of them. Because what happened, or a little history on this particular location, another built, in another part of this very same building, we leased to a tattoo parlor between 2011 and 2014. And she was able to get her, it was Hill City Tattoo, it was right up on the street front on Memorial Avenue. She was able to get her business license and zoning approved, no problem, because it was not restricted in the code at all. The building was still a B3 at that time. There were no issues, no complaints from the neighbors, nothing was ever done. She moved out of her own accord after a three-year run in the space. The code then changed, and I had another tenant that wanted to take up another space in the building. And that's when I leased 3114 to another gentleman who wanted to open a similar parlor in the same building, and that's when I got tripped up by the new code. Rather than try to rezone the building as a B5, as indicated in the staff's letter here, which I think is not appropriate for the building, I would never try to rezone that building as a B5. I think it's more appropriate to adjust the code to something a little more reasonable. From my point of view, tattoo parlors are not substantially different from salons, hair salons, nail salons. I have one of each of those in that building also, with respect to foot and vehicle traffic. Hours of operation, they pretty much generally open late in the morning, and stay open into the evening hours. Same with nail and hair salons. Noise is comparable to the same levels as other salons, and waste byproducts, anything like that. I mean, they're really not any more trouble than any other tenants that I have. That's 3114 there that you see. The previous tattoo parlor was a couple doors down in the same structure, just as of now. The operation now is actually on the backside of the building, so it's not facing the street. There's two units in that building, one upstairs and one down, and the downstairs access is to the rear. But that's all kind of beside the point, for what I'm asking for. It just seems to me that the restriction of B5 and better is a little too harsh for this type of business. My motivation here is strictly financial. I need to keep my business open and available to the widest number of tenants and the widest number of uses. And I get calls, this is the third or fourth tattoo parlor we've had leased from us in the last 15 years.
So, what are your thoughts?
So, we're being asked to change this...
I would like to add B3, add tattoo parlors as an approved use for B3s.
Right, you cannot change it today. What you're being asked to do, what Mr. Hicks is asking the Commission to do, is to consider directing staff to start the proceedings to amend the zoning ordinance, to allow them, allow tattoo parlors in B3 districts. If you, there was a resolution attached to that memorandum, if the Planning Commission chooses to do so, then we would go back, advertise this for a public hearing. We would formulate a very specific staff recommendation to you, and then in turn, it would go to City Council, with Council either deciding to change the ordinance or not. So, I think I outlined some things in the memorandum to you that you may want to discuss. You know, I think the biggest difference in it, to me personally and professionally, you know, whether or not you have body piercing with tattoos is almost irrelevant, but the state code does differ between the two. And right now, the way the ordinance is written, tattoo parlors are allowed in the B4 district, which is the urban commercial, which is essentially downtown. B5 districts, which is the most intense commercial district that we have, the main difference between B5 and B3 is obviously you can do outside storage in a B5 district. That's the biggest difference. And then the IN2, which is kind of that big catch-all for the large institutions. The ordinance is silent on body piercing, and the state code does differ between ear piercing, which I believe is considered to be in the lobe and the cartilage, and other types of body piercing. The tattoo parlors that we have in the city currently, I believe they are doing body piercings. However, the ordinance is silent on that. So, I think that's something else that you may want to consider. But I think from the outside of the property, it's just as Mr. Hicks says, I'm not sure why it's any different than a nail or any type of process like that.
What was the background, or what was the thought process of not putting in a B3 originally?
Well, I really don't want to get into a he said, she said, or he said, because you're definitely he. You know, the way I recall is that the ordinance was silent on tattoo parlors. It was listed as other, it came under this part of the ordinance that said, "Other uses as deemed appropriate by council." And one came in, and Council said, "Yes, they are appropriate in B5 districts." Now, how the other tattoo parlor was able to go in your business, and how it was able to get a business license, I can't speak to that this evening. The only thing that I can really speak towards is where we are today, is that it's not currently permitted in a B3 district. I think we're all in agreement that it really probably would not be appropriate to rezone that piece of property to B5. So, the Commission just needs to decide on whether or not they want us to initiate changing the ordinance, because there's only two, really, the Planning Commission and Council can initiate a change to the text of the ordinance.
I've gotten in this discussion, because I have property in that same area, and I have several people that I work with, and we've had this discussion, some of the issues that revolve around certain businesses, you know, that maybe we looked at 20 or 30 years ago one way. Culturally, we really need to look at them differently, because they're different. It's a different, in different environment, different culture. And of course, my business partner lifts his sleeves up and says, "And see," you know, and he worked at a suntan salon, and he felt it was very much like that. And we had a long discussion about it, and I would probably, although I'm like averse to anything, any needle, I, you know, I think it might be worth revisiting and looking at, at least finding some way, you know, of identifying if there needs to be a change, just because we're going to see more and more of this, you know, as time goes by. You know, it's kind of like a cell phone store. If we had banned cell phone stores 20 years ago, and now everybody has one, you know, we would have to look and say, "Well, there's a change in our community and the way people are doing things." That's my thought. I don't know what you all think.
I read through the code, and, you know, based on, I mean, looking at it purely from a business standpoint, I mean, you summed it up. I mean, this isn't, there isn't anything about this business that seems to conflict with any of the standards or the parameters of a B3, you know, zoning ordinance, other than the fact that obviously tattoos, you know, were included in there. And so, my thought would be, let's take a harder look at it and see. It's not a situation where you've got something that just doesn't fit, it just doesn't belong there. And it is a personal care item. It fits within the parameters of the footprint of the building, and it's something that's not going to create the foot or the vehicular traffic that's going to make it something that doesn't fit in a B3, in my mind.
Would this resolution include body piercing as well? Or just tattoo parlors? It says permit tattoo parlors.
It says it would be recommending inclusion of body piercing. There's amendments.
So, there at the bottom.
Be on the second, on the second page.
For the tattoo parlors and body piercings within the B3. Okay.
It seems like Hill City started offering body piercings, I think, after she moved in, just as a side note. I remember she had to, she had to have a separate space or a curtained off area to do that for some state regulation. That's the other thing. I mean, these businesses are fairly well-regulated at the state level, too, so I don't worry about them as a property owner so much, because I know it's not. I know they're being looked at very closely.
I don't have any problem with it being in a B3. It's, as you say, you know, 20, 30 years ago, it might have had a different connotation. I mean, you would have expected them to be along the same strip as beep shows and, you know, strip clubs or something.
Put them all out by the airport.
Right. But now, they're, you know, they've come a long way.
Well, the state went through a massive deregulation, I think, on this subject. I mean, I think Virginia in particular, they had some very stringent medical training requirements, I think, to operate them until fairly recently. I think that's why you didn't see them. It's kind of like the cash advance places, right? As soon as they deregulated it, now they're everywhere.
I agree. I am just looking over the other businesses that are allowed in the B3, and I don't, I feel like it's definitely worth looking into and starting that initiation to amend the current zoning.
Well, we will need you to have a motion and second, and vote on the resolution as before you. And from that, Mr. Hicks, we will process this, we'll let you know when it's going to move forward for public hearing.
Okay. If anyone wants to make a motion?
I think we adopt the resolution as written.
Second.
So, I just want to make, you understand this does not change the ordinance yet?
No, no, I understand. I was going to ask, since you brought it up again, I'll ask, does anyone need to be present at the council meeting also, do you think?
Well, it'll come back to this body.
Oh, it'll come back here?
It'll come back here first, and it'll go to Council.
Drafted for a draft.
And as always, we encourage all our citizens to participate in the public hearings, whether it be before this body or Council.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't vote?
Oh, yeah. Vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Last item is discussing the changing of the section of the zoning ordinance pertaining to sidewalks.
So, members of Planning Commission, back in June of this year, City Council directed staff to draft amendments to the zoning ordinance that would provide additional flexibility into when sidewalks are required to be constructed. Currently, the zoning ordinance that was adopted by Council in February of 2016, sidewalks are required along all streets for any development subject to site plan review. So, if, whether or not you're, if you have to do a site plan, whether it's a 2,000-square-foot building on a 10-acre lot, or, you know, whatever it is, or if you've got three street frontages, the way the ordinance is currently written is you have to build sidewalks along every street frontage. Multi-household, mixed-use developments, and multi-occupant commercial centers also have to provide a continuous walkway from the sidewalks to their building entrances. There were, there was some flexibility built into the ordinance when this was passed, in that if the cross slope across the right-of-way is in excess of 25%, the requirement may be lessened or eliminated. Or if there's some other physical constraints, such as a stormwater conveyance, that would make the construction unfeasible, it could also be lessened or eliminated. So, right now, the sidewalks are required to be different whiffs in different districts. Local and collector streets in residential districts, five feet. Your commercial districts are six feet. And then, in a B1 district, depending on where the building is positioned, it could be anywhere from six to eight feet. And then also, in the B4 district downtown, they're required to be eight feet in width. The subdivision ordinance that was adopted in 2010 already requires sidewalks to be constructed as part of new residential streets, and it's based on vehicle trips per day, on whether or not you have to construct sidewalk on either one side or two sides of the street. It's 6,000 vehicles per day, and I think that's probably quite a few trips. So, I doubt that any new residential subdivision is going to be putting sidewalks on two sides of the street. The main difference between the residential requirement and the commercial requirement is that the city will cost-share the sidewalk on the residential side. So, on a residential street, new residential street in a subdivision, the city will split the cost 50/50 on the curb gutter and sidewalk. On the zoning side, just pure site plan review, it's borne completely by the developer. So, sidewalks are supported by the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan talks about enhancing mobility for all the residents through convenient access to transportation choices, and really looking at the needs of pedestrian and bicyclists, but also transit riders, and also coordinating site and building design with the design of streets and public facilities. Also, some of the guiding principles for transportation speaks to several items supporting sidewalks. And then, the city's Better Streets Policy, which is contained within the comprehensive plan, talks about making sure our streets are built and designed for balance between all users, so not just motor vehicles, but we should also consider the pedestrian, bicyclist, and transit riders when we're building and designing our streets. So, these policies and goals are really designed to promote a multimodal or a choice-based transportation system within the city limits. This is just a map taken from the city's comprehensive plan. You can see where existing sidewalks currently exist on the right, and compare that to the street network. You can see that we have many more streets that do not have sidewalk than we do with. So, in terms of infrastructure, the city is, I would say, pretty severely lacking on walkability, depending on which area of the city you live in. Sidewalks also promote active living and good health. It definitely improves the safety along roadways, and it provides for transportation choice. Sidewalks are obviously needed for other modes of transportation, like mass transit. You wouldn't want to put a bus stop in and then have them walk down the side of the road or in the road, bicycling and public transit. There's also a social equity component in this, in that travel mode is not always a matter of choice for all of the city's citizens. You've got the young, the old, the disabled, low-income citizens might not have a vehicle, or might not be able to easily get to and from the places that they need to go. And access to goods and services and jobs are severely limited when land use patterns do not promote multimodes of transportation. Support for sidewalks also in the form of economic development. You know, employers are more and more wanting to attract employees that, you know, they want to be able to walk places. It's an entirely different makeup now. It also encourages denser development. You know, one of the things that when we were rewriting the zoning ordinance and updating the comprehensive plan, we talked about the need to become denser if we're going to support the population growth that we expect over the next 10, 20 years. In order to become more denser, we need to be able to promote more walkability, because we're not going to be able to travel everywhere by car. And it also, you could argue that it's better for the environment, and that it reduces the reliance on automobile and vehicular congestion. It's supported by several organizations throughout the city, Live Healthy Lynchburg, Bridges Out of Poverty, and Council's adopted transportation policies in promoting multimodal, safe, and accessible systems that are available to all of our citizens. There are concerns, obviously, with this. Financial, they're very expensive. You're looking at $50 a foot base cost for the sidewalk itself. That's four or five-foot walks, per linear foot. That does not include grading or other site development costs that could drive the cost of the sidewalk up. Location is obviously a factor. You know, we hear all the time, "Why are we having to put a sidewalk segment where there's no other sidewalks around?" So, they call it the sidewalk to nowhere. And, you know, there's a lot to be said about that. I think the thought at the time was that we were trying to build our sidewalk network over time. You know, we don't build our streets that way. You know, if we're going to build a street, we don't just build a segment here and not have it connected. That's kind of the way the sidewalks have, because we're really trying to catch up in providing pedestrian amenities, because over the past, it wasn't thought about in every instance. So, you know, we're trying to find a way to promote walkability, give people options, but also be equitable to the development community. And then, again, city projects, there's obviously budgeting concerns that go along with that. So, these are some examples that we did show to Council, and this is just a little legend. I'll preface this by saying that the thoughts here are purely staff's thoughts. They're not the thoughts of the development community, the design professionals in the community. They are the thoughts of city staff as we go through this. So, the first one that we will look at is James River Day School. James River Day School, they came in for a conditional use permit to build a new classroom addition, also do some playground areas. Per the ordinance, they were required to build sidewalks on three streets, across the frontage of Boon's Borough Road, down Bonton Road here, and also on Bonton Circle. The, I think that, depending on who you speak with, this section of Bonton Circle is in question on why, as they had to build that sidewalk. Was that really necessary? I think these two are, you could make a stronger argument for them, and actually, you know, obviously, the school didn't want to have to spend the funds for it, but I think that they're actually finding them very useful, in my conversations with the school, anyway. This is the Central Pharmacy. This sidewalk actually ended up being exempt. I believe this came to you for rezoning or conditional use permit. But since this pharmacy, this property had frontage on Fairway Place and Oak Lane, technically by the zoning ordinance, they would have been required to build a sidewalk on this portion of the street frontage, which, again, equity is a big concern. That sidewalk, there's no connection to this business here from Fairway. So, you know, again, that's another one that was exempt due to topography, but that's one that staff could say, "Yes, we understand why that may not be necessary." Campbell Avenue, this is another highly debated one. So, this was also a rezoning, if you remember. This was zoned industrial, and the gentleman came in to have this rezoned for counseling, I believe it was. So, the requirement would have required sidewalk along 16th Street and Campbell Avenue, this portion of the sidewalk would be exempt. This portion would have to be constructed. This one would also, but again, 16th Street is a very low traffic volume, and the question is, where would this sidewalk lead to? Again, that's debatable, but that's the reasoning behind it. High Tech Auto, this one is actually going in now. This also was a rezoning, but they are required to put sidewalk down Tully's Lane, but again, they do have two street frontages. Old Mill Apartments, out on Old Mill Road, this was actually zoned multifamily, so this was a by-right use. Yes, by-right use. Not only are they being required to build sidewalk, but they're also being required to build connections into the development from that sidewalk. So, staff did meet, and we tried to come up with some alternatives for the Planning Commission to discuss. Again, Council has directed that this be changed, so we're looking... So what we're looking for you, from you today is some input on some other ideas that, that you may think appropriate. One, instead of requiring the sidewalk on all the street frontages, just require it on the primary street in front of the business, looking at requiring sidewalks only as a percentage of the development cost. So if the development is X dollars, the developer would only have to put X amount of dollars into creating sidewalk. There was a thought of cost-sharing sidewalks on secondary or tertiary street frontages so that if, they, they would be required to do it on the primary, but if they wanted to construct it, or if we required to do it, if we required them to do it on the secondary and tertiary streets, then the city could cost-share that. Another thought was the city could cost-share sidewalks just the way we do in the subdivision ordinance. That obviously is a bigger policy decision also for council because we have to figure out where that funding's coming from. There was a discussion about providing exemptions for streets with less than a hundred vehicles per day. That would probably take care of the Sixteenth Street issue because I'm fairly sure there's less than a hundred vehicles per day on that. But it wouldn't take care of the James River Day School issue because that is where they do their pickup and drop-off from. So I'm sure they're very well exceeding the hundred vehicles per day.
Which one? Which of the three streets? Bonton or?
Yes, my understanding is, is that their pickup and drop-off is back in this area here. So there are a lot of vehicles in this area. Another thought was to just base the sidewalks on the amount of required land disturbance. It's not in this example, but where the old Hawkins grave is on Florida Avenue, we had a gentleman come in that wanted to construct a very small, I believe it was roughly, let's say it was four thousand square feet addition for auto-related business permitted by right. But that property had a very multi, several hundred feet of frontage on Florida Avenue that would have required sidewalk to be constructed. Now, should there be sidewalk on Florida Avenue? I, I think you could argue most definitely it, it should be. Is it equitable for that gentleman to have to pay that cost for a very small development? Probably not. So a thought of basing it upon the amount of land disturbance. So right now, the, the land disturbance threshold for the city before you have to do stormwater is five thousand square feet. That's also a thought that, that could be used to lessen it. And then another thought was, is that, okay, if sidewalks are not required in all these areas, at least if, if the development is grading in these areas to at least make sure that the areas are graded and cleared appropriately that if sidewalks were to be constructed in the future, that they could be. So to at least look at where the landscaping goes, look at how the grade works, look at where the utility poles are going so that we don't do anything to hinder the future construction of the sidewalks. So this is the list that we came up with for your discussion. Mr. Gary Harvey is also here. He's worked on several of these projects. He may have some insight on, on his thoughts if you want to hear from him today. But with that, we'd like to get your input before we go and start drafting this ordinance. Also with us is Mr. Don DeBerry, who is our transportation engineer again. And we are very lucky to have him back. So, you know, there are several resources available to you, but again, we'd like to have some direction before we go and start putting pen to paper.
Could I start with a question? I had, I was, because I was approached by somebody about a month ago on this exact subject. And they have a school and they want to build a weight room, possibly add some parking spaces because when they have an event, it's pretty full. It's on Breeze Wood Drive, Windale Breeze Wood, no sidewalks on any of them. And I said, what's the holdup? And they said, we have to put sidewalks and we have a long frontage.
Absolutely.
But there's no connection. And so they were wondering, you know, they said, well, the weight room would add no burden at all in traffic. It doesn't change the count of the students. You know, it's just, but to get the permit, we think that's what we have to do. And I said, I, well, I'm not really sure, you know. You'd have to go down to planning and talk to them, but that was one of their concerns was the sidewalk, sidewalk issue. Especially, you know, what Breeze Wood has a lot of, a lot of traffic. You know, there's no curbs. And actually, one time, I went off the road in my Jeep and got stuck in a, in a pothole because the road had broken off. And there's a lot of housing back down Breeze Wood, you know, all the way down to the end.
Yeah, Newtown's down there.
Newtown, maybe? Yeah.
Huge subdivision.
And, and so there's people all the, I think it's Breeze Wood.
You're talking about Breeze Wood or Fleetwood?
Fleetwood. That's it. Sorry. Yeah, Fleetwood.
And that's, that's kind of a different story because actually, see, this is good discussion, right?
Yeah.
Because we take these large institutional uses and they come in and they ask for conditional use permits, and they've been approved right in the middle of residential areas, right? So we're taking very intensive automotive uses because people are driving to this.
Oh, yeah, a lot of traffic.
We're putting in residential uses and we're making it dominant to the automobile, but we're not providing any other type of infrastructure for people to have to walk. So they were actually, there was a condition put in there that they would have to construct a sidewalk at the time it was deemed appropriate by the, the city engineer is what I believe that condition's at. So that was actually many, many years before we ever talked about this. So that's why they're being required, well, not only that, but it was a thought, there was a, a thought that that sidewalk would be needed beforehand. But you bring up a very good point. There is a very long street frontage. They want to do a very small addition. Might not generate a lot additional people visiting the site, but the way the ordinance is written today, they would have to build that sidewalk across entire frontage of Fleetwood.
Right. And the question, I think, when you talk about equity, is that the people who need the sidewalk are really the people who live on that street, who walk up and down the street and ride their scooters up and down, the little stand-up, ripstick or whatever they call those things, you know. And it's kids, and there's, like I said, there's no curb, there's no sidewalk. So really, you know, I think the argument with the school is none of our students live here. So, you know, there is a lot of traffic even outside of school, and they really need a sidewalk. It does need a sidewalk, and they recognize that.
And that, that's a, that's a, again, discussion is good. One, so no one in that area goes to that school is, is what I'm hearing you say.
It seems like nobody within like four or five blocks attends there.
So, but because there's no sidewalk, if they did, they can't walk there. So basically, we're isolating uses again, you see. But, and, and you talk about, you know, none of our, none of the people that come to our institution walk on that street, yet they're generating a lot of traffic on that street that for the people that live in that neighborhood are, should, should they be provided with a safe place to walk in their neighborhood?
In this case, it would be one of those sidewalks to nowhere. It would be on front of their property, but it wouldn't get to the next.
Right. And the other point, I think what I was saying about equity is there's a lot of people in apartments who I think don't drive or aren't, maybe they're not allowed to drive or they don't have a car, and they walk to the Quickie. And they walk on, I think it's Windale, in front of the newspaper office. I see them carrying groceries, you know, I've driven by and seen them carrying groceries. And so there's, you know, that's all times a day, that's all year. You know, the bus stop there, there's people who walk to the bus stop. So, you know, there's obviously a need. So I do, I do think it's important, I think the sidewalks are very important. I'm not at all downplaying that.
There's no easy answer. And Ms. Marion, I, I think the, the point is, is yes. It would be a sidewalk to nowhere at this point, but how do you get the infrastructure constructed over time?
I, I definitely agree. They, that whole street road, it's more like a road than a street. It doesn't have sidewalks and it's very rural feeling. Yeah, and it's dangerous.
So I, I think what we're tasked to do is to try and create a better balance between providing for a walkable community and dealing with the social equity issues while also making it a little bit more realistic and feasible for the development community.
What I'm struggling with that though, Tom, is, you know, we've heard that concept before. I mean, you've essentially got, if you look at the, at the first map that you showed about where our roads are versus where our sidewalks are, there's a lot of white space in there. So my thought there is, and you made the comment a minute ago, we've created a lot of areas where you can only drive, you can't do anything else. And that would certainly be supported by the white space. Okay, so, so everybody would sit there and go, okay, we need more sidewalks. That's great. But how do we deal with that? We deal with it on a case-by-case situation. So we have a conversation like you just had with Tom, where you sit down and you could play devil's advocate and go, you know, to Nancy's point, it's a road to nowhere. We're not, you know, this area is not servicing, or excuse me, the, the people who'd be paying for it aren't going to take advantage of those sidewalks. And so we, and even if you sit down and say, well, you're destroying the road, so you need to build the road, you're still probably going to have it written down or voted down because it's a case-by-case thing. Is there a way for us to, to take that argument and bring it up ten thousand feet and sit down and say, this is a, you know, we've identified this as an area that really needs sidewalks. And if you put it in here, I'm sorry, you're going to have to put in a sidewalk because the fact of the matter is, you know, we can't do it. Or the city is going to cost-share within these, within these enterprise zones, for lack of a better phrase, sidewalk zones, because that's where we really need to have it based on where the density of our population is or where we think the density of the population's going to be.
So what I'm hearing you, you say is that you may set specific areas of the city where they would be required regardless.
Or we maybe have a special situation that says to those guys, yeah, it may be a sidewalk to nowhere for two years, but we're going to build this out based on what we perceive to be the, you know, so that those are, I'm just trying to come up with some way of saying, we have a policy that addresses trying to fill in those white spaces that's obviously not being addressed because we're taking it on a case-by-case basis.
Tom, does the, the city owns a sufficient right-of-way on either side of that street to put sidewalks if, if miraculously we had billions of dollars we didn't have anything better to do with?
Again, it's a case-by-case basis.
So we don't always own?
We do not always have sufficient right-of-way. The ordinance also does permit for them to be put on private property with easements or obviously the right-of-way could always be dedicated.
To, to add to what, what you were saying about, you know, raise the level a little bit. I wonder though if, I, I realize the city does not have the money to continue those sidewalks up and down the street and all the way out to the Quickie Mart and down to the apartments. But could, as you, as you mentioned in the description of the sidewalk ordinance, rather than building concrete sidewalks, can you grade and just put up, even if it's a dirt path, it's a whole lot safer than people walking the street? And if there were any way to, to build a lesser sidewalk, if it's, you know, got pebbles or mulch or something on there to?
Yeah, the, the issue with that then becomes ADA accessibility.
Okay. And you can't build a sidewalk that's not ADA accessible?
I was trying to think like, I was thinking of that, like doing on a bike lane kind of basis where even if you had to build it out a little bit. But the problem with that, you're not going to be able to ADA, and you're not going to maintain it, so that's going to be a disaster.
Could very well be, yes.
And liability if somebody trips.
So again, it's not, not really an easy answer.
Well, it's, and the issue, what I, because you've made this point in our first meeting, and I, I struggle with this. But we've built ourselves a problem that we're trying to pay back and fix with money that we don't have, at the same time, we're trying to build so we don't create the problem in the future. And I realize that's, I mean, I'm sure that that's, well, I know it's true because everybody else at the class we went to said the same thing to some extent. But, but having said that, we can't just stop and say, well, it's just too big a problem. We can't deal with it. We'll let somebody else handle it. But, but still, I don't know what the best way to stop that progression is. Sort of feel like the guy going over the waterfall and can't, can't swim away. No matter how fast I stroke, I'm still going up.
You know, possibly a, a start may be just looking at the primary streets. Because if you could get that, that spine in, that, that may be a little bit more reasonable.
Is there a way to look at population density within a given area? Because the example that you used on, if I'm thinking about the right road,
Behind the Newspaper.
Behind the newspaper office, there's a lot, there's a lot of houses back there.
But you know, twenty years ago, you talk about like building in the future, twenty years ago, there, it was really just one street and a couple sides. There weren't.
No, I understand, but I'm trying, I'm sitting here trying to, I'm struggling trying to think. Because you, I mean, we've built plans on where the growth of the city's going to be. You know, it's a guess, I got it, but we, we kind of have an idea. I mean, we haven't started a conversation with Tarianna yet, but we're going to have those questions to like, I don't know how many degrees above that when we hit that, and that's all going to be based on sewage and utilities. So there's got to be some way for us, I mean, the whole purpose of this organization is to sit down and say, how best to create a quality of life within the boundaries that we call Lynchburg? And there's got to be some way for us to figure that out. Can we? I like the idea of just primary streets, Tom. What happens? Let's play that out for a little bit. Because if you go back to the example that you used, I think with the, with the drive-up pharmacy, the walk-up pharmacy, yeah, that one. You see where you've got the road on Fairway in red? That's not a primary street, I got it, but.
Well, I think, let's.
But Fairway, in my mind, would be a great place to have a sidewalk.
Well, it would, but should that be at the cost of the pharmacy?
Well, here's the problem, and that's, this is the issue, is that the fact of the matter is, we need sidewalks. And I don't want to have a situation where the pharmacy doesn't do anything because they have to put a sidewalk, like you explained, Tom. At some point, the city's not going to, going to do it. There's no sidewalk ferry that's going to deliver one. So is there a way for us to develop a situation to where we can have some kind of a cost share? We can have some kind of a, a situation that, that addresses that? Because other, because if it's not going to be the pharmacy, it's going to be whoever builds a house on Fairway, right?
Well, it, it wouldn't be required if they were just building one house, right?
You see, but you see my issue.
So the possibility of, of the sidewalk getting constructed on Fairway, the entire.
We'll take, we'll, we'll forget Fairway, take, um, take, um.
You live on Fairway, ask her.
I mean, the likelihood of, of the sidewalk ferry filling in the rest of it is pretty unlikely as well because like Tom said, a single-family home doesn't require sidewalks either, so.
But that area back there, I mean, because I'm, if I'm remembering my geography correctly, which is a danger. Fairway connects to that Club Terrace area, right?
It doesn't, no.
Just so plain.
It's a cul-de-sac.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it just comes down.
So this could possibly also be handled by the less than one hundred trips-per-day exemption if we pursue that.
But you take something like, but, but the reason I bring that up is you take that whole area on, Landon connects to whatever, where the Club Terrace coming downhill. No sidewalks in that area, and people walk all the time. You know, and that's, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, for what we're talking about, I mean, that, that's an area where you've already got people are in the middle of the street. I mean, I can't tell you the number of times I've been garroted by Mike Valentine's leash while he's talking on the phone walking his dog. I mean, that would be nice, just get him on the sidewalk. But, but those kinds of issues, that, I mean, you, you need sidewalks in those areas for all the things that you talked about, Tom. I mean, that's where kids are going to walk, that's where people are going to be out in the middle of the street, that's where accidents are going to happen. You know, how do we address those kinds of issues?
I think you could look at, also what I'm hearing you saying is maybe your Artere and Collector Streets, which are designated, yeah, that sounds like Don's.
Yeah, he's ready, finally irritated to the point he's ready to say something.
Can I ask, like, when you talk about primary, secondary, and tertiary, is that primary? Can I ask, like, when you talk about primary, secondary and tertiary, is that primary to the facility? Are you talking about, primary is not arterial. We're talking about different ratings of roads. Okay.
So in the pharmacy instance, the road that's, is obviously primary to that, they're addressed on Oak Lane.
Right.
So that's where the sidewalk.
It already has a sidewalk.
Well, right. So if the sidewalk was really that big, big of a deal breaker, maybe people would develop where sidewalks already exist. It's a theory, I'm not saying it's correct.
Well, no, I think that's, I think that's legitimate. If I'm sitting here, I've only got X number of dollars to spend and I've got to spend some of it on sidewalks, that's probably going to be an, it's probably going to be an obstacle.
Don, you got any enlightenment?
Well, if, if you, if the board would allow me, you know, an idea would be to let the engineering department work with the planning department to come up with a draft flow sheet. I mean, listening to the discussion, I think it's the, it's not any one alternative, but probably a combination of a number of alternatives that would be, you know, is the development on a primary route and without a sidewalk, the answer is yes, then you got to build a sidewalk if it's financially feasible. So is it, so, so yes, you got to build a sidewalk, is it financially feasible? You know, in other words, do they have to build a retaining wall or a structure to support the sidewalk or something along those lines? And then if the answer to that is, we have to create a guideline, of course, so that's, the average cost is $50 a foot. Is it, you know, would it cost more than $100 a square foot or a linear foot? And if the answer to that is, it would cost more, then you got to go to, you know, the answer's no, then, then we're not going to require that. Or maybe the answer is, will the city cost share if it's beyond a certain amount? Is the city willing to cost share? Is it that important?
Would that feasibility also kick in to, I'm only building a $50,000 weight?
Well, that's, that's kind of where I was going to go. You could say, okay, what's, what, what's the extent of the development? Is it generating pedestrian traffic or over X number of vehicles a day? We could create a flow chart that has maybe a dozen inputs, if this, then that, if, if this, then yes, if this, then no. We could come up with a flow chart that, that we could come back to you with at the next session and maybe you could focus a little bit more on, you know, where we would like to see them. Because if you're within 500 feet of a bus stop, if you're within, you know, 500 feet of an existing sidewalk connection, there's a lot of scenarios where you'd want to make these folks contribute. But if, if they're only building, adding a bathroom, then that seems, that's crazy. So then at that point, if it's under some threshold of building square footage or value, then maybe the city would be required to jump in and say, yes, we're willing to cost share this at this point because the value's too low, so.
Right, I think, I think what you're saying is possibly a menu, kind of a matrix that you look at, and that's, that's an excellent idea. I, I think in the instance of the Florida Avenue example with the small auto oriented store, you know, since that's such a large parcel, is it really fair to make them build a sidewalk several hundred feet long? Probably not. However, if someone came in and redeveloped that entire site, you know, developed it commercially or whatever, then yeah, I think they should have to.
I think this idea of steps and filters might be, I think that makes perfect sense.
Tom, did we talk about the, you had one there that I'm not sure if it was the one I'm thinking of. The one that was near the Humane Society? Did we talk about that?
Oh, this is not that one.
Yeah, because that was the one where they were going to have to build a sidewalk across the street from them, wasn't it? They were going to have to build a lot of.
Needing to get the right of way.
They needed to get the right of way for it.
Yeah.
Because their turn lane was going to take up the whole width of the right of way.
I just wondered, what was, what was the trigger to city council to, to ask us for this?
I, I think that they heard some citizen complaints from people developing. And again, what we're talking about today is creating this kind of step process or list where the ordinance right now is very rigid. And I'll just point out that when staff originally drafted this, the way it was drafted is a sidewalk would be required if it was within a quarter mile of another sidewalk. Now, at the time, we were told, no, we want sidewalks everywhere. And that's how we ended up where we are. From a pure planning perspective, just tunnel vision, yes, I agree with that. Is that, is that really equitable and reasonable? No. So you have to put a big dose of logic into this. You can't get, ultimately, yes, we would love for the entire city to be walkable and have sidewalks everywhere. Can we get there overnight? No. So how do we step ourselves into that?
That would be my only issue with putting together a matrix like you talked about too. Going back to the tattoo conversation, are we going to be in a situation where people are going to, I don't think you're looking at this right. We don't really hit this, you know, this lever because. So that would be the other issue, would be the balance in such a way that you have flexibility, but not so much flexibility that, you know, you take this, you make it subjective rather than.
Right, and I, and if it pleases the commissioner, Mr. Gary, I guess Gary's still here. He's been looking at this issue from kind of representing his clients for a long time. But, you know, he may have a different view that may be good for you guys to hear if you'd like to, to hear that.
Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Harvey. I'm a resident of Ford Avenue, but I'm here today as a sign professional, one of the principals at Architectural Partners. Two of the projects that were presented here and also the project that you mentioned, we have been involved with in discussions with those clients. You know, I'd like to say I am all for the walkable community. I think in almost 99.9% of the instances where sidewalks are going to be required, I think they can be a good thing. We started bringing this concern up several months ago, met with both Tom and, and Kevin specifically about the James River Day School project. And I can talk with you a little bit about that if you need to, but later with the Campbell Avenue project. For us, it was the rigidity of the process. Can you go to the James River, or can you turn the little thing over above? If you look at the James River Day School property, just to the, do you guys have the pointer? Can I borrow the pointer? Apologize as an architect, you know, pictures and talking with my hands. Okay. We are currently doing an addition right here. It is a two-story addition and it's about a total of 7,000 square feet. Well, that triggered the requirement for sidewalks all along Boonsborough Road, all along Bonton Road and along Bonton Circle. The school feels like this one, this walk right here will be very helpful for them. They have students that live in the community and this, this is very walkable to, for them. This sidewalk, they feel like they're being a good neighbor and a good, good citizen in providing this because there, there can be a lot of foot track and traffic along Boonsborough Road that will be going up to the developments that are happening out here. However, Bonton Circle leads to one residential property. These properties are owned by James River Day School. In the future, James River might acquire this last property and request that the street be vacated so their property can be continuous. So for them, the, which I, I like some of the stipulations that, that the planning staff are recommending. I think they're very insightful and very good. But for us, the 100 vehicular count would not work because of drop off. We have a drop off procedure where we come down Bonton Circle, go into the back of the school, drop off, circle back, go back out, you know, to, to stack as many cars. So if we did a vehicular count, we would be well over 100 in a day and it's simply because people from the school. So this, this is what triggered my conversations with planning staff. And, you know, it was very much black and white. And I, I, I said, well, what if we went to the, to the Board of Zoning Appeals and, and made a request? If we, if we were to try to do that, they should, they were not allowed to take any action. The city attorney commented and said they would not be allowed to take any action. So we couldn't go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we couldn't come to the Planning Commission, we can't come to city council. So a sidewalk that ultimately will cost the school $25,000, leading to one house. That's it. They are putting in all of this sidewalk to a grand total of close to $100,000, which is about 5% of their total construction project. So immediately right off the bat, they pretty much, before they even started, hit a huge chunk of their contingency because the sidewalk ordinance was somewhat of a surprise to them when they were developing it. So that's why we brought this before staff. My request would be, as someone who's served on the Historic Preservation Commission, when we had concerns, you know, items were first brought to staff, then it could go before the entire commission. And then if someone still disagreed with their decision, it could go before city council. I would like to see if there were more mechanisms to allow staff to be able to use logic in some of these decisions. Because we, you know, most of the people we talked to on staff agreed, this sidewalk, you know, who, who was, who does it really benefit other than the one resident here who has said he's not going to use it? So, and the other option I would like to, to throw out there just for consideration, and again, I don't know how the logistics of this would work, but in a lot of instances when we do development proj, projects, some of them might have stormwater requirements or so forth that are either financially challenging or physically challenging for the project. And there are credits that the client can then purchase. And so one of the things, I really like the idea of the if this, then this, you know, kind of triggering this path. But one of the stipulations that you could possibly put in there is that if for some reason you would be required to put in a sidewalk, but some of these other stipulations apply, you could in lieu of putting in a sidewalk, pay for credits that would then go in a pool that the city could then use, and then the sidewalk ferry would be funded and could put sidewalks in areas that might be critical for us to really be putting in sidewalks.
Yeah, we actually discussed that and spoke with the city attorney about that. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that in the state of Virginia. That's essentially what it is. So we talked about that, Gary, but we're not permitted to, to have a sidewalk fund.
Or a sidewalk ferry.
Or, well, you know, whoever wants to be a sidewalk ferry, please come forward or, or don't, just, just do it, but.
So it's a credit issue, the stormwater credit, you know.
That's, the state said.
It's a federal thing, right?
Well, that's a state, state law said, yes, you can buy nutrient credits. They don't say you can buy sidewalk credits. So, and, and I understand what you're saying, we, we hear this from time to time. We, we really like for staff to have more, the ability to use more logic in it. Unfortunately, zoning ordinances have to be clearly understood. You know, and they have to lay out what the criteria are if staff is going to provide logic. You know, I can't just go out there and say, yeah, this is silly. You know, it's got to be based on something. So what we need to come up with is what those things are.
And I agree.
So, you know, maybe a, a good, and I'd be definitely willing to do this, is, you know, if, if Don would be willing and you and maybe some other staff or maybe some other outside developers, if we could, you know, maybe under the, under the understanding that walkability is important in the city of Lynchburg, that we all sit down together and try and come up with something that is workable. I do not think, just saying, going back to, don't require sidewalks anywhere, oh, it's, it's.
Yeah, I don't think that helps the city.
So, so I've gotten a lot of good ideas today from, from you. I'd love to hear if there's any more, but I, I think Don came up with a very good suggestion is maybe that we go back and kind of develop this list and draft these things into an ordinance for you, for you to consider.
Can I ask one question? Florida Avenue. Okay, let's say a, if someone, they were able to get a conditional use permit and build some apartments, mixed use. The city then will pay 50/50 on the sidewalk?
No.
Let's say if it's a residential development then?
If it's a new street. So if they came in off of Florida Avenue and built a new street, we would pay 50/50.
Okay, I was wondering about the equity between business, like why would a business pay more versus a?
At the time, they were trying to promote more residential development, single family residential development in, in the city.
And, and Tom, I'll, I'll sort of restate this, may, maybe it's not necessarily staff, but if there is some other body, because again, right now, the only, the way the ordinance is written, the only way that James River Day School has to request this piece of sidewalk not be required is to go to court. And so.
Well, I think the matrix, I mean, I think, I do think that's a, it seems to me something that staff would be involved in and, and would be able to do. It seems to me like, Tom, you're saying that given that kind of framework, maybe different decisions can be made. Is that what you're saying? If we have a different framework, maybe there will be different decisions?
Yes, and, and the James River Day School is a very, it's kind of a peculiar instance because I could very well see, and I, in, in the future where James River Day School would own everything and possibly Bonton Circle would be vacated and it would no longer be a city street. Now, whether or not they would need, there should be a sidewalk in that area where you have multiple vehicles coming, dropping off and picking up children, you know, providing for the pedestrian safety of their students and teachers and whoever's in that area is, that's kind of debatable. But you see the point, but then, then it's kind of up to them on how to decide to do that.
What is the status of the project right now? It's been all the way through city council, right?
Currently, we are required, our current site plan shows this sidewalk.
They have to build it.
They have to build it.
So.
I'm not sure this is going to benefit them at all, but I, I think it's definitely spurring the conversation that needs to occur.
They wait till last to build that one.
I think they are waiting.
Well, certainly there's more cases, and there will be more cases.
Oh, absolutely.
Just a new, newer, something's been.
So again, I think we need to enter into the conversations with the understanding that walkability is important and, and long term, I think the ultimate goal would be to provide sidewalks where it's feasible. But we can't get there overnight, so there needs to be a little bit more flexibility built into, to the process. So I, I think we have a menu list of things to, to look at. The Planning Commission has, has given us a few other thoughts. Would love the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Harvey and Don and draft something up to bring back to you.
Anybody else have any points of discussion? All right, well, then I think that's the case, we, we can wrap up the meeting. Does anybody make a motion to close?
So move?
All right, see you all in 45 minutes.